Hello, everybody. Let me just change my background. I have my work background. It's better.
You got the official background there?
Yeah, I had my take off my official now, my my other official. It's not unofficial, it's just a different. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Sylvia. It's nice to see you.
Yeah, you too. Nice seeing you too.
Just so everyone knows, we're gonna have John take his oath. At the beginning of the meeting. So Kevin and Carrie will run with that part and then we'll introduce the item and kind of get into the the matter at hand.
Thank you. And I do have a little script. Thank you, Noah and everyone else. I have a little script prior to going into the item today. What, six o'clock? Do we have everybody on?
I think we all care.
Yes, Chair Lemus, it looks like we have everybody on.
Okay. So are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm calling this meeting to order today. And the first item is, we would like to do the administration of oath of office to appoint a new commissioner, John Savage.
Mr. Savage, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Savage.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend.
Do solemnly swear to work and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mr. Savage. Welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Welcome, Commissioner Savage. Yeah, I just wanted to ask, did you want to take a minute and just introduce yourself to everybody?
Okay, thank you, Sylvia. I have been living as a permanent resident in Katati since 2020 at the beginning of the pandemic. I actually purchased the town home here on Santara Way back in 2004. And this has been our weekend home for the last several years. So we've enjoyed the weekend and the occasional holiday week in Katati. And we, you know, I've just fallen in love with the city and all the amenities that we have, the location, the people that we've met. And my work background, I was for 30 years with Marriott International Hotels. I was a regional vice president revenue management for the West Coast. And with the pandemic, you know, as you know, hotels were particularly hit hard. And they offered everyone a early retirement package. And I had just turned 62. And I guess you get a little extra when you're that age, you do a retirement package. So I did the math and decided we're moving to Katati. So.
Great. Okay, welcome. Welcome so much. Welcome, Commissioner. And thank you so much. Now we'll go to the next item, which is roll call.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Savage.
Here.
Vice Chair Hancock.
Present.
Chair Lemus.
Here.
Thank you. And then the next item is approval of the minutes. And we have two minutes. So we'll start with the first one for the regular meeting of March 7. Does someone make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 7, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all approved?
I approve.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, maybe I'm overstepping. Staff, is this a you go by name by name and get approval, or is it just all approved?
Probably a roll call vote, Sylvia.
Okay, thank you. So we'll do a roll call to approve the minutes of March 7.
Just quickly, John, since you weren't available for that item, unless you watched it, then it would be appropriate for you to abstain from voting.
Okay, thank you, Noah.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Staying.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Thank you. And now for the approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 21st. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on March 21st, 2022.
Okay, do we have a second? Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Staying.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Thank you. The next item is changes to the agenda. Have there been any changes to the agenda for tonight?
There are no changes, Chair Lemus.
Okay, thank you. And we did receive some oral communications. I'm sorry, written communication. Is there another oral communications that we should have?
There were a number of comments written into staff which were attached to the staff report. And then one additional comment was provided after the report was published from Gen H Generation Housing. Their executive director, Jen Close, wrote a letter endorsing the Katati Station project. And that has been, I believe, sent to the commissioners.
Yes, I received this. I imagine everyone else did as well. Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna move to our matters at hand. And before we start, I'll go ahead and just, I have something just to share. We want to welcome everyone to the public hearing to discuss a proposed Katati Station apartment project on Santara Way with the Katati Planning Commission. We'd like to remind you that the planning commission is made up of community volunteers who have an interest or expertise in planning issues. In this case, because the Katati Station project is requesting a density bonus, the planning commission will only be making a recommendation to the city council whether to approve the project or not. The city council will make the final decision on the project because granting a density bonus is specifically in their purview. And then just to give you a little overview, the format that we'll follow this evening, the staff will introduce the item and present their staff report. Then the planning commissioners will ask clarifying questions of staff. And then the applicant will give their presentation of the project. Next, the commission will ask any clarifying questions of the applicant. And then I'll open a public hearing to allow anyone else who's interested in providing input to comment directly on the project. Individual comments are limited to three minutes, I believe. Yes, three minutes. However, we have received all the written comments that the staff has collected and has provided to the commission for review and consideration. After all the interested members have commented, then I'll close the public hearing. And the commissioners will ask any other further clarifying questions of staff or the applicant. And then the commission will discuss a project and the various points that were raised during the meeting and will vote to make a recommendation to the city council on this project. The staff has indicated that the city council will likely make its final decision on May 24th or June 14th. So thank you. It's what we wanted to share some information. So we'll go ahead and proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Lemus. Commissioner Savage, I'll give you a moment. All right, when you have a conflict of interest, it's appropriate to announce that and identify why. And then you leave the room, which is interesting in the era of Zoom, but I'll let you get to that.
All right, thank you, Noah. I my understanding is that since I live within 500 feet of the project, that that would be considered a conflict of interest. So I'll mute my microphone and turn off my camera until all of this has passed. And if it's appropriate for me to join back in after that, just let me know.
That is appropriate. After we hear this item, then we'll welcome you back when we get to reports by staff. Thank you for your service, Mr. Savage.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll wait for the PowerPoint to load up. Thank you. And so as identified, this is a present public hearing to review the Katati Station apartments. It's worth noting, this is a update to the previously approved project that allowed 74 units on site, including construction of some public parking and a public park. We'll get into the comparison and contrast, but this is a whole new project, a whole new set of entitlements, and the planning commission should look at it as such. We'll get to the next slide. So the project description specifically, it's a request for design review and density bonus to construct 98 apartment units or multifamily homes and about 5,500 square feet of commercial square footage on three and parking on three vacant parcels totaling almost two and a half acres within the Santara Way specific plan. Between 19 and 20 of the 98 units would be deemed restricted as affordable housing. The city council will ultimately make that decision when they act on the density bonus. The project does include development of a half acre public park and improvement of a 0.65 acre city-owned parcel, which will include a 31 space parking lot and an extension of Depot Way. The staff report identified it as 32 spaces. And so just to clarify and sharpening the pencil a bit, there is a loading zone needed for an ADA parking space. And so that did take up one of the spaces. And so as identified, this is a designer view and a density bonus of the entitlements. We'll go to the next slide. This slide just highlights the zoning and general plan for the property and the surrounding areas. So if you'll advance the slide one more time, it'll highlight that those are the three parcels proposed to be developed. It's on the east side of Santara Way, just south of the parking lot. And then the tracks are are just east of the site, the railroad tracks. You can tell or see some of the condominium developments to the south and west. And some of the surrounding properties are designated a combination of residential, low-density residential, medium and urban residential, as well as some commercial East Katati corridor. We'll go the next slide. So this slide is an aerial photograph intended to just further highlight the location. And so if you advance the slide one time, it'll highlight the three parcels proposed for construction of the apartments. And then the next advance it one more time and it highlights that's the area proposed for the Depot Way extension, the parking lot and the city park. And if you advance it one more time, it'll highlight and once more some of the areas of frontage improvements that are proposed to be modified. So this project would widen Santara Way to improve circulation there and allow 90-degree parking to provide the maximum amount of parking available on the street for the residential neighbors. And we'll get into the details as to why. And then if you look slightly to the south, there's an area directly adjacent to the existing neighborhood park there that would be the parking there would be removed and in favor of adding parking further north. And I'll get into the details on that, but I wanted to highlight. So some frontage improvements would be made there to remove a couple of the bulb outs and remove the parking. And this is all to facilitate fire department access with their fire truck. The street there is very narrow and the fire department in approving those those previous projects prohibited overnight parking there because they were concerned that all the residents would be home at night when they needed to to respond to an emergency. And so they prohibited overnight parking along the street in certain locations. And staff's understanding that's been a very source of frustration for the neighborhood. So we'll go to the next slide. So this slide also does the same thing, just provides a little bit more context. So Carrie, if you would just advance it one, that's the location of the apartment homes. The next advance it one more time. This will be the location of the depot way and parking lot and park. And then once more, Carrie, it'll highlight the parking areas proposed to be added and then modified, the street widened. And then if you advance it one more time, it's worth noting that the city has also required a construction of an emergency vehicle access or evacuation route across that portion of the city-owned parcel there to allow an alternative way of getting out to East Katati Avenue in the case of an emergency or a need for that. And that was a condition on the 74-unit project as well. But that easement has been recorded and the ability to construct that is in place, just worth noting. So Carrie, we'll go to the next slide. So getting into some of the background, there's a lot more in the staff report. But in March of 2001, the city council adopted the Santara Way specific plan. And this is a, at the time, was a 19-acre mixed-use transit-oriented development. And it was envisioned to intensify the land uses along that cul-de-sac neighborhood with a mix of office and residential to be able to take advantage of the the train that was coming. There's a lot of background in between and about 100 residential units were approved and constructed on Santara Way before we get to October of 2016, when the city council approved the 74-unit version of the Katati Station project. That included all the amenities, the public amenities that are included in this project, but were was a slightly less unit count and less affordable homes and a slightly different design. And I'll get into that a bit. Extensions have been granted on that project and permits are ready to issue, but the owner has deemed that project not viable due to a variety of factors. In October of 2019, the owner in looking for viable options to make the project cover their costs and be able to move to construction, engage with bridge housing to build us 100% affordable housing project. Bridge spent a lot of time and due diligence looking into that. And it was also deemed to not be viable. And that's even with the fairly large city subsidy that the city council did vote to support in order to allow that project to be 100% affordable housing. In June of 2021, this new project was applied and requesting the 98 units. Between 19 and 20 of them are proposed as affordable and it maintains construction of the park and the parking lot and widening of the road and construction of of all the street parking in an effort to address some of the concerns of the neighborhood. And then in February this year, staff sent out a notice to the neighbors to let them know the project was in and asking for comments. As identified, about 13 comments came in. Those are attached to the staff report. And then in April, we held a neighborhood meeting in person just to allow folks to come in and hear directly from the developer about what they were proposing, allow them to hear directly from staff about how the process would go. We had four people attend that meeting. And I think it was really appreciated that staff has has tried to engage it and and notify people as much as possible separate from the standard public hearing process. And along those lines, we did also put an onsite sign ahead of the meeting to notify folks who maybe didn't get a notice but drive by the site that this project was being decided by the planning commission. And we'll update that sign to identify the date for the city council meeting once that's determined. So go to the next slide. Getting into some of the the design. So this is the site plan. It shows three buildings. One with the the primary facade oriented towards the park and the the secondary facade oriented to Santara Way. Building two, the primary facade is is fronting onto Santaro. The entire frontage of the site, including the park, is proposed to be 90-degree parking. The Santara Way specific plan doesn't. It it would rather have angled parking, but in order to allow the maximum amount of parking available, the previous project was granted the authority to put in 90-degree parking in that location. Similarly, what's labeled here is the overflow parking lot is the 31-space parking lot that will be constructed. And then there's the depot way connection just to the east of that, north on the plans. So that's an extension of a city street with additional street parking accessing the backside of this project to allow them alternative ways to getting out to Santaro. And if you look, there's actually three access points where folks who live here could circulate out to Santaro and then get out to East Katati. We'll go to the next slide. Here's the elevations. They're very consistent with the previous approved project and the applicant will kind of get into some of the differences, but you'll note the commercial portion, which here is the bottom left, is is proposed to be slightly different than what was previously approved with the goal of trying to differentiate the commercial square footage and space from the residential to further differentiate it. And this project, because it achieved the additional unit count by making some of the three-bedroom units smaller into one and two bedrooms, some of the locations of the balconies for those did not line up. And so they proposed to remove some of the balconies that were previously approved or included in the previous design. And then they are also proposing to reduce the size of the balconies in this project for essentially a cost savings measure to make the project more financially viable. We'll go to the next slide. This is just a rendering of the parking lot view of of the project design. And then we'll go to the next slide. So getting into some of the analysis, and there's a lot of policies in the general plan that staff has highlighted, but to summarize, the project does encourage a mix of uses in the Santara Way specific plan. It incorporates a significant amount of recreational open space, both the public park, the private balconies, and it has a courtyard in between the building two and three to provide additional outdoor and recreation space. It is trying to accommodate viable housing sites at a range of income levels. As mentioned, it includes about 20% of the units as affordable housing. It's encouraging housing on infill site. It's requesting several incentives from the city to support their affordable housing efforts. And then it is proposing a density bonus. Excuse me. So staff does find it consistent with the general plan. We'll get to the next slide. So the Santara Way specific plan is a, it's a specific plan, which is essentially a subset of the general plan, but it includes a lot of zoning level-specific design and development criteria such as a limitation on the maximum amount of residential square footage. As as was mentioned, this plan envisioned a significant amount of commercial uses intermixed with the residential on this street. It was, you know, in 2001, the North Bay was seen as as a cellular company tech hub emerging. That was just before the invention of the iPhone and the whole kind of playing field for telecom businesses and industries changed in that time. There is a floor area ratio specified in that plan of 0.65. That's the ratio of floor area to building footprint. It directs a zero-foot front setback, so asking that the buildings be set all the way at the back, directly at the back of the sidewalk with no setback. It identifies a two-and-a-half-story height limit, but then also allows 40 feet. And then has very specific parking requirements, one space per one bedroom, one and a half space for two bedrooms and one and three-quarters space for three bedrooms. And then this and then three spaces per 1,000 square feet of commercial space. And it allows that parking to be shared. So staff, as identified in the staff report, staff does find that the project implements these with the waivers and concessions that are requested as a part of the density bonus. And we'll get to that in the next slide. So applicants for development projects, residential development projects have the right to request a density bonus under state law. And the criteria for that request outlines the process to request up to 50% density bonus in this case, because the base the base density for this area, these three parcels is identified as 48 units in the specific plan. So that would be 72 units total. The previous project granted a couple more units than that. And the use of this density bonus entitles the applicant to certain concessions and incentives which they are requesting. And it actually, under new changes to the state law, it actually allows them even further reduction in the parking that's required for these types of projects. The applicant is not requesting that. They're proposing to stick to the parking requirements of the Santaro Way specific plan. Lot more details in the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any clarifying questions, but I just want to highlight that. But the state law and the Katati municipal code do allow additional units or density bonus to be approved. And the applicant is requesting that that be done. The city council has the ultimate purview, but staff welcomes the planning commission input on that. And they're requesting 50 units above that base zone for a total of 98 units. The design and site plan of the approved project are generally maintained as as we've identified, and the applicant will get into some of the contrasts with the the approved project versus the new project. We'll go to the next slide. So because parking is seen as the primary concern, in addition to circulation constraints, I wanted to provide some very specific parking analysis in the presentation. So this slide outlines the requirements of the Santara Way specific plan. As identified, it's one space per one bedroom, one and a half spaces for two bedrooms units and one and a three-quarters space for three-bedroom units. And then and the applicant and the project design does implement all of that. But then it also requires three spaces per 1,000 square feet of commercial space. And so there's 18 spaces proposed to serve that. And one of the, one of the benefits actually of having that commercial square footage allows that space, that parking to be shared. And so the assumption is that, you know, the parking gets used by the people visiting that commercial space in the daytime. But then at night, it's freed up for other folks to use and it's a shared parking allowance. So to some, to some extent, it will provide an expanded amount of parking beyond what a pure residential project would provide. It's the next slide. So digging deeper into the parking, there was a slot or a table in the staff report that was less than clear and some of the analysis was less than clear. So I just wanted to walk through it really quickly. The project proposes 106 spaces on site. Reconfiguring Santara Way will provide 44 spaces total. The on-street parking on the Depot Way extension is 16 additional spaces. That community parking lot that was identified as 32 spaces in the staff report, but actually is 31 because of the need for the loading zone for the the ADA parking space. Total is 197 new parking spaces to be built with the project. There's existing on Santara Way between some of the current parallel parking that's allowed on the street and then some of the areas that people are just informally parking on the kind of the shoulder, the dirt shoulder adjacent to these undeveloped properties. We tried to calculate out what the total amount of that parking is, and we calculated that as being about 32 spaces at 25 feet per space going down the whole length of Santaro. So then if you net that out, then you get a total net new parking of 165 spaces. And then this project, the Katati Station project, including the 18 spaces required for commercial, is providing 138 spaces. So then there will be a net new community parking spaces provided of 27. And one of the conditions of approval for this project, if it's approved, requires that the applicant come up with a parking management plan that addresses all the concerns of the Rancho Adobe Fire Department who limited the overnight parking with the original approvals, engages with the existing HOA and takes additional public input and and consideration for the commercial space or the commercial needs and their residents. It comes up with a plan. The city will facilitate that process, make sure that we address as many needs as possible. And that plan gets updated and submitted to the community development department and the public works department annually. So we just really tried to be thoughtful and do what we could to address the concerns we heard from the neighbors regarding parking. And and the main most frustrating concern that we heard was the prohibition on overnight parking, which was placed on that that essentially the cul-de-sac, the the neighborhood because it's very limited access in and out in the street was built very narrowly. And the fire department was concerned about being able to get in there in the case of emergency. So go to the next slide. Just to summarize where those parking spaces are by location, this slide highlights the numbers for each area. We'll go to the next slide. So as was identified in the staff reported attachments, the project is actually found to be consistent with the Santara Way specific plan, even with the increased unit. The unit count of 98. So the Santara Way specific plan identified that it assumed 198 total residential units would be built in that neighborhood. And existing is 100 units. So then this project would build out the remaining 98 that were assumed. But it's also worth pointing out, because it's a bit of a misnomer to think of it as just base density, because it also assumed that almost 250,000 square feet of commercial uses would be built on these properties as well. I think in looking at it from today's perspective, in reality, the idea of putting a whole lot of commercial properties and offices in a residential neighborhood on a dead-end cul-de-sac is probably not the best idea. Staff has submitted and gotten a grant for $50,000 to rewrite the specific plan to address the kind of current reality. And this is just anecdotal information. And this is just anecdotal information, but we are also asking the city council to give us a budget allocation. So we can rewrite this plan to make it more residential oriented. And try to pivot away from that um viewpoint of requiring such a large amount of commercial. And office space at the end of the street. It just doesn't seem like what the neighborhood would want, and it actually doesn't seem like a very viable um. Proposal. And so we have, we are working to do that. We don't have a timeline set or, and it's not fully funded, but we have a fair amount of funding and we're looking to start probably in early twenty twenty three. Um, under today's uh assumptions. Um, staff also reviewed the project. We required some new environmental studies, vibration, noise, air quality and traffic studies. Uh, as a part of this ninety eight unit project and found it to qualify for an infill residential exemption under sequel section fifteen one nine five. Um, like I said, there's a rather lengthy analysis uh attached to the staff report to. Support and summarize that, but I just wanted to touch on, touch to the high points. Uh, we'll go to the next slide. So getting into the public comments, as identified, we sent a notice out to all residents within fif- five hundred feet of um this property. Uh, these, this group of properties, I'm sorry, we got thirteen public comment letters and one phone call comment. Uh, almost all were uh. Expressed opposition or concern to the project. Again, primarily due to the existing parking situation. They identified that a lot of the folks. Um, because most of these units were approved with garage spaces and a lot of the current residents do not use their garages. That has kind of shifted some of the assumptions on the parking. Uh, folks also said that just the assumptions of the Centero Way specific plan itself are not really um. Uh, respectful of the the reality of how many cars people have, and then also the fact that some of these units are occupied by multiple students. Maybe doubling up in bedrooms and then they have uh two vehicles per bedroom, and then it 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 just kind of compounds and creates some issues for the neighborhood. Uh, but again, the primary concern heard was congestion, safe circulation in and out of Centero Way, and then the prohibition on overnight parking. Uh, we did require the applicant to address that. Uh, and uh by widening the street and coming up with that management plan, in addition to building all of the parking that we've highlighted and discussed. So given those things, we'll go to the next slide. And the Community Development Department is recommending that the planning commission recommend city council approval of design review and density bonus for the Cattati Station apartment project. To allow construction of ninety eight multifamily housing units, including affordable housing. Uh, five fifty five hundred square feet of commercial space, construction of the park and the parking lot, as well as the extension of Depot Way. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Uh, and the applicant is here as well, and he has a presentation uh himself.
Uh, thank you so much, Noah. So first of all, I want to go to the commissioners and see if anyone has any clarifying questions that they have of Noah and staff. And if there's no questions, uh we will go to the applicant and ask the applicant to. We do have a question.
Yes, um, yes, I mean quite a project here. A lot of detail has been presented. In the new project, are there any closed garage spaces?
There are no garage spaces with the new project.
It sounds sort of, that would sort of mitigate then or be, you know, help, I guess, or wouldn't exasperate the current problems. I I'm just wondering, within a project like this, very dense, um and all the outdoor parking, what are the stormwater targets and how are they? Being met? I know there was a very brief little introduction to that in the staff report, but I wonder if you could go over it because it's a very visible. Uh, design issue.
Yeah, that's a great question. So there, you're right. In order to get this level of density, there is a lot of impervious surface. And so um. One of the benefits of requiring a park next door is that you have an area to construct a stormwater detention basin and infiltration basin. And that is exactly what is proposed. So the park area, and you can see it on this slide right here. So those grass areas actually. Beneath those are infiltration and detention basins where all the stormwater for this site is captured. And uh funneled into those locations uh to allow it to be captured, treated. And infiltrated into the site in keeping with the stormwater requirements of uh the water quality control board.
Very good. Um, so that is, can you, can you just identify what's the level that's being met within that?
Uh, I, it's usually, it is a. Have to go from memory. There's a standard and it is not the hundred year storm event, but I think it's either a ten or a twenty year storm event is what you have to plan for. With your stormwater criteria. And then how that works is essentially there's. The detention basins have an overflow that allows it to flow out to the, the stormwater system, so the storm drain. In the case of a large, you know, larger event than the capacity is meant to allow to capture and infiltrate. Then it can overflow directly out to the uh storm drain, which is connected to the broader storm drain system in the city. And that's based on the water quality uh control boards, design standards and requirements.
Right. I think it's good to state it in something like this because it is a difficult standard, but we all appreciate the sort of the clean water. Um, so, so another question, um, we've gone over project zero a lot in other um areas. I I and then I know there's a detailed traffic study, which I wasn't able to really get through. But does, how how would safety and pedestrian safety and all users of the road? What, what was the design standard that Centero Way that was built to and was it met? And with the change with the widening, is it being met? And that's the last of my questions, so.
Yeah, that's a good question. So Centero Way actually has a flexible uh roadway width. Um, but it, the, the current development was built to the narrowest uh roadway width. And the idea there was to allow pedestrian connectivity, shorten the amount of distance it takes to cross the street, all those things. What it actually did was create what's been voiced from the neighborhood and the, the fire uh marshal. Is created kind of a pinch point for vehicular circulation in and out to where currently, if vehicles are parked on the street, two cars can't even pass. And so a lot of the neighbors in their letters and and in the comments we've received said, you know, you have to pull over and let people pass one way. And that's why the fire marshal and kind of a compromise for the approving the current hundred unit project, hundred units of projects out there. Uh, prohibited overnight parking on Centero Way to keep that circulation element clear. Uh, we've tried to address that by widening the street slightly. Still including a lot of bulb outs and pedestrian features, traffic calming features to keep the traffic slow. But um also trying to improve the safety. And then to your point about pedestrian circulation, all of the. Uh, the pedestrian walkways, you can see them highlighted here are all required to be. Um, differentiated pavement as either with a stamp or color or both. To clearly delineate when you're entering a pedestrian circulation element or corridor. Uh, obviously proximity to the train station helps with those issues. Uh, and then lastly, as identified, we do have a um evacuation route. Planned and required out over the city-owned parcel uh onto uh East Cattati, separate from Centero Way.
So is there any new crossings? I know further, further south, there's specific crossings and bulb outs, but I didn't see. Any on this new project or I just didn't find them?
This project is not proposing any new pedestrian crossings uh cross Centero.
So wouldn't it be where building one is, wouldn't pedestrians walking along there who want to walks south? Went, went to walk west on East Cattati Avenue, they would probably try and cross over. At that building, one position to the other side of the road and continue. Um, along there, possibly even with the, with the other connections that could be in there.
But you, you're definitely right. People will tend to do that. Obviously, from the city staff perspective, we uh encourage and. Direct people to use crosswalks, uh which there is a crosswalk out at the intersection of, of um East Cattati Avenue and Centero Way. Uh, you know, we mid-block crossings are, are very challenging uh locations to keep people safe. And so from a staff circulation standpoint, we minimize mid-block crossings. However, to your point. I do see as that large empty lot develops adjacent to uh the car wash. There will be more pressure for that mid-block crossing of folks living there, trying to get to the train. And so we are, we have directed the applicant to explore getting another emergency vehicle access point to the neighborhood to the South Breton Way. Because there is a stub in Breton Way into that parcel, and we are looking to. Uh, improve that circulation as that property develops. But right now, we did not want to encourage any more mid-block crossings. You can see. Uh, folks coming from the existing development to the south. Crossing through this to get to the train station. There are delineated pedestrian pathways, all highlighted, all. Uh, separated from the vehicular driveways because we know that will happen. And actually, there are easements requ- uh intended to facilitate and support that. But we did not want to get anybody or encourage anyone to cross Centero itself.
So it sounds like that analysis come, i- is what's going on in the rest of the city is as that. Yeah, you know, it's not being built for pedestrians. It's being built for, and and there's a lot of complaints about vehicular traffic going through. So we're not really, I mean, we're, we're going the opposite direction than Project Zero. I just want to just make that comment.
Yeah, from the staff, staff standpoint, we, we do not feel that way because we would say use the crosswalk that's at the signal. There's the safest place for you to cross, but that, that's absolutely understood.
Yeah, so I just thinking, I think that's an unreasonable expectation. That's not what, what the, this discussion about pedestrians. Does, but I accept where we're going with this. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Sylvia. Yes, I just had a couple of comments. Um, I just had a question. It, so the removal of the balconies. On page fifteen, it says, removing the balcony is serving eighteen units. Is there going to be any balconies out there or is it the removal of all the balconies?
No, there will be a number of balconies. Uh, the elevations that were shown are correct with the balconies, and the applicant's presentation gets into more details on that.
Okay, and then on page. Um, twenty-three, I just wanted to, since this is my jam here. Um, it's SB thirteen eighty-three, not SB thirteen eighty-one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and then I just had one of their futures. It, so when I was reading this, I, I couldn't, um, page twenty-five, it says the regional housing service exists. Um, staff feels that there is a great benefit to increasing the amount of portable housing near the fu- future smart stop. Is that?
So that, there was some elements of the staff report that were written for the previous project as before. So that's a typo, I apologize.
That's okay. No, I was reading. I was like, is there going to be another, is there, am I missing something? Um, no, that was really all the questions that I had, but um I'm, I'm interested to hear what the applicant has to say. Thank you.
Before we go on, I have a couple of questions, Noah. Um, so my understanding is that uh the street widening will help, happen to help with parking and also emergency vehicles. Um, there will be a parking management plan developed uh for use of the parking. Uh, will there be assigned? Parking to the residents of of this Cattati Station?
So we didn't, so we did not want to uh kind of predetermine how that parking management plan works out. Because we want to hear from all the existing residents, you know, the hundred, hundred homes that live around there. But what we're imagining is that. Uh, the overnight parking will go to like three-hour parking, but no overnight parking on Centero. Will go to three-hour parking unless you're resident, then you'll get a pass, and that will allow you long-term uh street parking. And then the limitation on parking would prohibit or discourage people from coming out of town, using that street parking to take the straight, smart train all day. We would want to encourage them to park in the smart train parking uh lot, where that's where it is. And then. Uh, the residential parking pass would allow more flexibility and use of the street parking.
Okay. All right, thank you. So yeah, that was my question that I had. Um, okay, thank you so much, Noah. So. Uh, at this point, we'll ask the applicant if they can provide their presentation on the project.
Can you see and hear me? Great.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. My name's Doug Elliott, and a lot of this uh slides that Noah presented are duplicative of the ones I put together. Thank you, Noah, for capturing all that. So I will just fast forward through the ones that have already been presented. And just get to the relevant ones that I'd like to present. So next slide. Can I move these slides myself or does that have to be done remotely?
Okay, I, I've tried, I try every meeting to advance it myself and I I usually struggle, so I just ask Kerry to do it for me.
Okay, Kerry, next slide, please.
One moment. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to introduce myself and my background. I'm a bit of a hybrid as developers go. I've done a lot of market rate infill housing in the North Bay over the twenty-five, thirty years of my career. I've also been a director at EH Housing, which is a nonprofit housing you may have heard of. That's um one of the larger ones in the Bay Area. And we compete with Bridge on sit projects. And and um. I formed a company uh early two thousand. Uh, two thousands called the Workforce Housing Association, which has been my focus, has been to try to find. Sites that didn't make sense for a hundred percent affordable because they couldn't achieve the tax credit or local subsidy. And had an opportunity and a community willingness to increase the density so we could create workforce housing. Housing that's not subsidized, but that's more affordable by design. And I actually did the first two projects right next to this project. The one is, I developed Breton Way. Um, project, and I remember very well putting in that hammerhead and not taking out a house for the potential EVA. So somewhat ironic. Now, these years later, I'm connected to it. And then down the street on six ninety-six East Cattati, uh right at the um cross street of Lancaster, I developed that project. As well. And both of these were taken through entitlements, and then uh Standard Pacific Homes bought them from me. So I have some experience with Cattati, and what we're trying to do on Centero Way is consistent with that experience of looking for. Essentially what we call the elegant solution, trying to find a way to create more entry-level and affordable housing without subsidy. Because there's never enough subsidy to go around and uh there's never enough entry-level housing to go around. So it seems like it's a great opportunity in the marketplace to, to fill my need. Okay, um, next slide is Anario. Uh, you already know where it is. I just. Put the highlight City Hall, Oliver's and the project. Um, next slide. One of the things that's um attracting me to this site was that it is in a specific plan area that is encouraging density. And density is transit-oriented, infill density is how you would describe this from a policy standpoint. And this site is a, a natural for that. And I concur with Noah that uh commercial. Uh, usage is not really viable on this site for, and it'll mostly be residential with some small mixed use in the future. But I, I prepared this outline so you could see this in time, this is the Centero Way specific plan area. I not, and you can see all of this additional development area. And we are one, one piece in that that will utilize the density that's available. And then when is the new Centero Way specific plan. Becomes adopted, these other pieces in green will become um possibly create more housing in fill. So this is a very, this is an infill rather than a greenfield project, and it's transit-oriented, which is very consistent with the kind of projects. I think that are act tremendously to a community without detracting from it. Uh, next slide. So this is just our area of of project highlighted. As you saw from the site plan, we have a roughly two and a half acre site here. Um, we're creating new parking at Community Park. We're creating new parking along the frontage and we're widening the road. Which will be a benefit um to the neighborhood. So next slide. So again, this is the site plan that you just looked at. And this site also creates an EVA that allows access across the city on site. This community park, which also provides the water filtration, and the site plan is identical to what was approved. Our approach in doing this was to reconfigure the buildings inside, not outside. To keep the same footprint. In fact, the civil engineering improvement plans don't require any changes. Um, the, so the basic plan that's approved now is what we're presenting. We're simply reconfiguring larger three-bedroom units into ones and twos. And that's one of the reasons why we've eliminated some balconies, um because the fenestration shifted in a way that didn't work. For the other units. And also frankly, it's been a budget uh problem with this project, trying to make this financially feasible so it can get built. So we're looking for ways we can value engineer it. And uh, and that's par- primarily done through the construction costs and through the unit configuration. So next slide. So this is just, um, this shows the perpendicular parking that will be added along Centero Way, and this is a rendering showing the primary. Along Centera Way and this is a rendering showing the primary entry into this into the property project from Centero. Next slide. Um, so the changes we're asking for architecturally are relatively minor. The buildings are essentially untouched with the with the uh. Other than the balconies and the balconies as proposed are shown this rendering. And there's in the uh, submittal package, there's an architectural sheet that shows specifically which balconies are removed. Which are modified with red with red lines around, so you can see that in your package. I, when I looked at this site, I felt the commercial didn't feel didn't feel differentiated enough from the residential. I wanted the commercial to feel like commercial space to actually uh, serve the neighborhood needs. And to feel like you're not just walking into somebody's housing um, community to find a commercial use. So um, the architect uh, modified the awnings. On the portrait and then we're proposing a change in materials, a stucco siding, some other kind of siding. That with a different color and the fenestration is more in a commercial format. And we think this enhances the project and enhances the viability of the of the commercial use. And that's pretty much it from a design perspective. So the next slide. Um, and so you can see this just points out balconies that are eliminated and balconies that have been slightly reduced in size. So um, next slide, please. So we're, the project is currently approved. It has construction documents. Um, the building permit set has even been completed. It would need to be updated to comply with the new codes. But it's an approved project. Some of the key metrics we had in designing this was to keep. Right now, eighteen point nine percent of the total project is deed restricted affordable units, BMR units. Um, our goal was to was to always meet or exceed that number. Also, as a percentage of base density, twenty-nine percent of the project is is um. Is a BMR units and of the total base density and of those five are very low. And as you probably know, very low income units are the most difficult to incorporate, the most, they cost the most for a project. Um, and then we have five thousand plus of commercial space, so. Those were the metrics we had to uh, to accomplish. Next slide. So again, our goals were to maintain the identical site plan, the same buildings, same height, same overall square footage. And the reconfiguration occurred on the inside. As a result of changing three bedrooms to ones and twos, we ended up with nineteen point four percent of total units as affordable, which was an increase. We ended up with forty percent of the base zoning as affordable units and we increased the very low incomes from five to eight. Kept retaining the commercial space uh, space, removing the decks and differentiating the siding. So this one slide shows the basic key goals of the project. Now it occurred. Next, please. So this is, this is the key to what's really, what's going on is the original project was many, many three bedroom units. And now it's primarily, we're moving towards a a project that's predominantly one and two bedroom units. And so that's, that's where the market demand is. That's where entry level housing exists and that allows us to better utilize. The land area and and the buildings. So that's um, the other value to this is that one of the concerns neighbors raised early on is they felt three bedroom units had a. Uh, propensity to be used as ad hoc dorms. Because it's the most economical way for students to put four people or so in a three bedroom unit to buy the rent four ways. And that is the reality is we're half a mile from Sonoma State and that's has happened. And building a lot more three bedroom units would provide an opportunity for that to occur. So by not having three bedroom units, we're addressing a neighborhood impact concern. We're also creating a project that is financially viable in the marketplace. And when you look at a project of this density, which is approximately forty units per acre. There's not a lot, those that kind of density does not tend to lend itself to family housing. Because there's not as much outdoor space and recreational space um, for a child, for for lots of families, for lots of kids. So this project, I think, is much more appropriate to the density and to the location and less impactful to the neighbors. Um, next slide. I know has already gone over the um, the parking situation and so these are just the units. We even got the thirty-one correct uh, that we're adding. Um, and so there's the hundred and nine on site. I mean, end of the day, we're creating a hundred and sixty-five new parking spaces, which adds twenty-seven net. New parking spaces for the neighbors and by widening the road. We are going to be allowing the city, the residents to park overnight when they can't now because of fire safety. So this is a positive impact for the neighbors from a standpoint of parking. Um, next slide. This is again, just a re a reconfiguration of the parking similar to the slide Noah uh, presented. Uh, next slide. So we look at what we feel are the are the neighborhood benefits and then the community benefits. Um, we're providing a lot more parking and increasing the off-street parking available to neighbors. We're expanding the parking adjacent to the smart station and we're and by. Creation of a road widening, the overnight parking restriction will be removed. Uh, we're improving fire protection and public safety because we are actually creating that extension to Depot Way and creating an evacuation route. As well as an emergency vehicle access route that'll serve our project and the neighboring projects. And we had begun discussions with a neighbor uh, across from us on the west side of Centero about potentially. Pursuing an EVA across his land to my old project on Greenway. And we've, we have agreed, we're going to continue those discussions and try to make that happen if we can. It's not a condition of approval, but it's something we'd like to see. It benefits our project. And frankly, I'd like to be involved in the next phase of Centera Way development and it's going to be needed for anything else to happen there. So we'll work with the city to do that. We're reducing the number of bedrooms by reconfiguring. Oddly, it's more units but less bedrooms. It's twenty-five less bedrooms in total. And there's no published data on this specifically that I can find, but in general, from the twenty-five thousand residents, we have it. EH, uh, we have a fair amount of anecdotal data from managing and in general, bedrooms correlate to people. Not exactly and always, but sometimes more, sometimes less. So less bedrooms in a project means less people. Less total residents, less total residents means less parking demand, less neighborhood impact. So we think this is a real positive for the neighbors. Again, I mentioned the idea of of the dorm uh, discouraging uh, three three bedroom units uses dorms. And then the community park and neighborhood commercial. Last slide, please, for second to last. Katari is no different than most of the North Bay. There is a dearth of entry level workforce housing. People who make too much to uh, be able to afford deed restricted affordable housing and too little to afford market rate or priced out of the market. And have to commute very long distances. And this takes away a lot of the opportunity for workforce to live locally. Projects like this one with uh, predominantly small units are one bedrooms average six hundred and something square feet. Which is pretty affordable by design. The market rate for a smaller one bedroom is at the lowest end of the market. So the, so the ability to attract people to learn less, earn less is embodied within these plans. And it's and it's not seeking subsidy to accomplish that. It also increases the permanently affordable housing. Um, which is uh, important to do and it and. Creating BMR deed restricted housing, including very low income housing, is a big accomplishment. And typically cities have to spend a lot of money to get that to happen. And in this case, they're not spending very much money at all. We're asking them to simply pay the impact fees on the low and very low income units. So bang for the buck, it's probably the best uh, dollars per housing, BMR housing generated I've seen on a project. Um, you, I'm sure you're all familiar with the arena um, requirements and cities are being encouraged. Um, if not bludgeoned to to meet very high housing standards. Um, and this gives an opportunity for um, the city of Katari to to really make this big dent in the arena requirements. Across the spectrum of incomes, which is critical. Again, the neighborhood serving community space, I think will enhance the neighbor, the neighborhood and make it a more vital place to live. Um, impact fees are not insignificant. From a fiscal standpoint, two million dollars flowing into the city as for the balance of the fees is not an insignificant number for a small city. And um, that's built in. And then we would always use best practices. It will be environmentally sound construction, forward-thinking. Methods of of materials and methodology to build it. And so then the last slide. This is our last slide, is we did a comparison chart. Um, and this sort of recaps on one page, what's changed. Uh, bedrooms up by twenty-four, bedrooms down by twenty-five, affordable units if you do up by five, nineteen. Affordable percentages up from nineteen, eighteen, nine to nineteen, four. Um, the percentage of base zoning up from twenty-nine to forty percent. Commercial space at least five thousand equal, required parking equal, parking provided equal, excess parking equal. In this case, the parking ratio per bedroom, we have actually more spaces of parking as a ratio to the number of bedrooms in the units. So that concludes my my presentation and um, I just also, before we conclude, I just want to, this is a kind. This is sort of a complex project when he gets this dense and it's been demanding uh, to get this far. I just wanted to acknowledge uh, that I appreciate working with staff. And and team there because it's it's a difficult project to get to this point and I want to just acknowledge and appreciate that.
Well, thank you so much for the informative presentation. Uh, so at this time then, we're going back to the commissioners for any questions, uh, clarifying questions the commissioners may have. Are there any commissioners that may have questions, uh, of Mr. Doug Elliott? Commissioner Murphy, go ahead.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could circle back to the commercial space. Um, I'm curious, is there, is that space being built in a manner where you would expect a certain type of commercial business to? Um, utilize it and if so, could you share that with us just so we have a better sense of how it would be used?
Yes, um, the commercial building, the commercial space is roughly twenty-five to twenty. Uh, roughly twenty-five hundred to twenty-six hundred feet in the in the corner of each building at the entry. Two separate buildings. Um, on one side, we anticipate having the leasing office, which will serve the project, having the community. A room, having the mailroom and then a gym, which we, our intention is to make that gym open to the local neighborhood community. On some kind of parking basis. So that provides, that's that's the program for that parking place, for that commercial space. Um, we haven't fully determined, but are are the direction we'd really like for the other spaces to do collaborative workspace. There, it seems like the world has changed a bit with with COVID and that we're moving more towards remote workplace. And particularly with much smaller units, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. It's nice to not work in your bedroom and to be able to go outside and do some zoom work or desk work someplace else. So we think this would be a natural for collaborative workspace and we would probably, I don't know whether we'll build it and operate it ourselves or get a consent. Get someone else who does that as a specialty to do it, but that's how we envision using that space.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Moore and followed by Vice Chair Hancock.
Yes, I just had a question on the affordable housing. Who oversees that? And um, when somebody say is in a one bedroom and it's very low income and then they get a better job. How does that work? Do they automatically have to move out or is there? Just, can you just walk me through the process?
Um, every city has um, enters when they have a deep, when they require below market rate units. Permanently affordable, which I just called BMRs for slang. Um, every city requires the developer to go into an affordable housing agreement. And the, a lot of those clauses in those agreements are uniform throughout based on state law. Because virtually all deed restricted, fully affordable projects like what EH builds and what Bridge was trying to build on this site. Are financed with a combination of tax credit equity, which is a federal program, state grants and local money. When you add all the criteria together of those three uh, funding sources, which is pretty standard. Um, they require verification, they require auditing, you know, you know, credit checks, tax returns. Uh, correlating to median income and family size to enter. And then there's some differences in how um, cities audit. Um, the ongoing occupancy of those use as as um. Incomes might go up, but in general, people are not kicked out because their income went up. Um, typically what happens naturally is they want to go someplace else as they have more income. And that's and you, at EH, we've got a lot of residents in California and Hawaii and that has not been an issue. I can't, no one ever gets kicked out because they have more income than originally. That rather, that kind of self-balance is, it takes care of itself over time. Noah, you can speak to that too.
I was gonna say Commissioner Moore, Mr. Elliott identified it exactly. That's, that's how it works.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make a comment on that. I just know I'm dealing with folks that. Um, were in Burbank Housing years ago, that they they did get a little notice that they were making too much money then. And they were given like a, I think, two months to to move out to find someplace else. So um. I don't, like you said, I don't know what the the city does, but that was Burbank Housing's policy back then. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Vice Chair Hancock.
Yes, hello. Um, thank you very much for the detailed explanation and it looks really great to have all of that. Um, varieties um, in there and I fingers crossed, hope that's getting at the right level. I'm coming back to the ever-present discussion on um, sort of vehicular parking. Um, I'm just wondering if you could go over what is the influence of the building. Versus and the ownership there, the street parking versus the other parking that's around. So there's parking that's on the street. Um, is that and the ownership of of, I guess, these buildings? Is that also managed by the buildings, the what's on the street?
So that's a multi-answer question. I think it might be easier if we go back to the slide. That shows the overall site plan perhaps.
Right, yes, there you go.
Okay, and maybe go to the one before that, the aerial shot or a couple before that to the aerials. Keep going. There. What you can see is the existing parking pattern and Centera Way, the demand for parking occurs from the hundred units that are already built here.
Right, with with a lot of garages, closed garages.
Most of these units, uh, particularly um, on on west side of Centera Way are um, townhouses with tucked under parking with garages. Um, that occurs also on flanking the park and then there's some stacked flats, which are actually affordable units on the corners. Um, and then there's surface parking. What happens, as everybody knows with uh, parking spaces, is they tend to get used for other things in parking. Centera Way residents are no different. Um, it's just people need more space. And so a lot of times the parking gets dedicated. The HOAs have rules and regulations about that and whether or not they're compliant will be something that will go into the parking management plan. Th- this project is all surface parking. There are no garages. The density doesn't allow garages and therefore we're not going to have any reutilization of parking spaces. Into extensions of living. So all the surface parking is, has been created. Then we can go back to the parking plan. If you would mind, which is slide, keep going. That's it. One of, within the density bonus rules, um, you are allowed, as a developer, you're allowed to ask for. Uh, X, certain number of concessions based on how much affordable housing you're delivering. Oftentimes, one of the key concessions that's normally asked for is parking. Because most spaces don't have enough uh, area for it. And um, we did not want to do that. Um, we wanted to maintain the parking as originally approved, even though our project is actually has less. Parking demand in terms of the calculations. Um, we felt that that was going to be the significant, not just impact to achieve neighborhood support. But frankly, when you manage a project over time, if it's underparked, it causes management issues. It's a headache for the neighbors, it's a headache for the manager. So we felt parking was was an important amenity to keep. So we've preserved the amount of parking and we have, we had also the ability to expand parking onto Depot Way. Um, which is adjacent to the property and the overflow community parking lot, where we get sixteen and thirty-one spaces. And then all along Centera Way is being utilized for for perpendicular parking, which maximizes parking. Frontage, which makes good sense because it's proximate to the retail space. And then evenings when people leave, uh, excuse me, the commercial space, when people leave commercial, that becomes available for parking. One of the ideas we've talked about is taking the depot away parking and making allocating that as dedicated space. For the residents of Phase Two, which is logical, they would park there. For the residents of phase two, which is logical, they would park there and allocating some space on street parking. For Santero Way Phase One, making that a priority. And we'll work through that with, we're gonna have a lot of work to do with the HOA to really hear what their issues are. But net net, they're getting a whole lot more parking than currently exists. And we think that's, we just think that's a good good way to build a project if if at all possible.
Yeah, and and I and I appreciate that and I appreciate those those diagrams. I appreciate there's a lot of thinking going into those, but. Um the sort of the detailed question I've got is the green, the eighteen, seven and nineteen. Are they, I mean, they're they're on street parking, but are they actually um. Uh vertical parking, so very much more efficiently, but is there a difference in the way that they will be managed? Than say the brown, the thirty two sixty one, the onsite hundred and nine.
Yes, yes. Um the onsite spaces in in and the in the brown. Hundred and nine spaces are going to be allocated for the project.
Okay, good.
Those are the project part and they they sit on the project's property. And they will be serving this, the the ninety eight units within this project. The parking along Santero Way in the green is going to be part of the parking parking management plan. And you can be sure that neighbors across the way are gonna want some privileges to park there. And that makes sense that they would have them. And the depot way parking would be a logical place for us to allocate overflow parking for our project. So I think the geometry of it works out relatively well to serve both needs.
I would just add, so the green and the blue will remain, that'll be publicly owned parking spaces. So the city will be fully in control and be able to uh respond to the residents' needs and and requests as a part of the parking management plan.
Okay, great. So that becomes because it's obvious that it's then on the street and it's accessible. So um so there was that you mentioned earlier on that, that there would be a um a residence parking scheme. Of some sort, can you just talk a little bit about that? Where would that apply?
One of the conditions of approval for this project is to develop a parking management plan. And the city isn't prescribing what that plan is, but they're just prescribing it must be done. And the city will participate in that process, that will help facilitate it because it has a community impact. And fortunately, right across the street um is ownership housing with the homeowners association. So we'll be able to interact with the homeowners association. What as we work through, uh because I have a group that represents them as as typical of a condo. Our project is to be operated not as condominiums, but as a as a rental property, so there'll be a centralized management. So the owner and operator of our apartment will be the property manager, the operator of the condos across the way are is the HOA. So those two parties need to collaborate, incorporate the fire department issues, incorporate the city's issues and come up with a plan. And then keep it updated. So that's part of this, that's part of the burden of this project and it's it's a reasonable requirement.
So in the sense that you say there is a parking management plan required. By the city, is that a process then that the developer is taking? On with the other stakeholders, which would include the um HOA?
Yes, I'll let Noah speak to that.
Yeah, Commissioner Hancock, that's absolutely right. So since I've been here in Gattati since two thousand nineteen and we started talking about bridge housing, taking uh over, you know. Potentially building this project and we engage with the neighbors, their parking has been their number one concern and they have. Uh there's some very strong feelings about parking and frustration with the prohibition on overnight parking on the street. Um that's been voiced repeatedly to me. I talked to the police department. Uh sixty percent of the parking tickets written in Gattati are on this street because of the parking challenges that they face. And so um given all of those things, i- it's my understanding that that's why. The city required essentially that this project be overparked in order to facilitate and fix those those existing residence issues. Uh when they approve the seventy four unit project. So in my review of it, I reiterated those issues. And the requirement that this project addressed them. Uh generally, I would never advocate for overparking a project, but I think in this case, given what I've heard directly from folks who live there. Uh it's needed just to address all of the various constraints that are ongoing. And then not to mention, we have a challenge with our smart parking lot being the only one that doesn't charge for parking. And so I also understand that a lot of folks maybe from other communities come to our location to get on the train. Uh and we want to make sure that we don't just create more issues to encourage that. And while we also address the the existing residents and the future residents' parking needs. So the condition states that that plan has to be created and in place, approved by the city. Before occupancy is granted on these units and it has to take input from the fire marshal and those existing HOAs. Uh as a basically a voice for those residents.
I I definitely appreciate, you know, the detail there and I'm not, I'm not saying against the parking. I think actually this plan has a a good set of safety elements that we normally talk about as well with the with the with the. Uh the ninety degree parking, I think that um makes drivers aware on the road that they should. Um perhaps be a bit sensitive to to um, you know, people, other vehicles that are in there. Um so I very much like that. What I'm what I'm just, you know, hearing is that, I mean, at the basis of what's happened in the other. Parts of the plan um with a hundred, you know, a hundred residents currently, the hundred units, is they've externalized the cost of the parking. They've essentially um requiring it be picked up um by the, you know, the public purse, if you like. And so I I think this is a reasonable approach here. But I I think the key is, the key from what I've seen in other areas is is that um it's managed for the residents and the residents. Uh essentially, there'd be some sort of permit parking. Um so that other areas, it's already been voiced in the next row along and Greenway, I think. How again, people on there are not using their their garages and they're coming around onto onto Santero. So how to actually manage it so that um there's a reasonable match and that for the people who. Essentially on are over. There's our owners that are having extra vehicles in there because they have four or so. Um residents or four or so vehicles that they have to find a solution that doesn't impact everybody else.
I I'd like to am amplify your comment and correct one one observation. Um the parking addition, I you're the nexus you've outlined between. The neighbors not using their parking and creating a bigger demand on the on the other adjacent properties is accurate. But the neck, but it's not being financed by the public, by public funds, it's being financed by the development project. So the city is not paying to build this parking. This is built into the cost of building this project. This is one of the reasons why this project needed to have greater density so it could be financially viable. Um and it's also one of the reasons why we did not consider changing the parking at all. And trying to expand the property and have have bigger buildings while we kept it in place. Because from an ongoing management standpoint, that is the key issue to to really make the property work successfully. And um you know, we're infilling in a neighborhood and uh success within integrating with that neighborhood is a key metric. For how you how this project will be successful. And I also, I've worked in a lot of communities, some of which have said, well, you're next to transit, but so you shouldn't have cars. Well, suburban transit is very different than urban transit. People who live next to this train station will still have cars. They're not gonna be, if maybe there's, there'll be an anomaly where they don't. So some of those urban standards are being misapplied to to suburban locations, which is not being done here. Secondly, oftentimes in communities, parking plans are prescribed as part of the process. And they never get it exactly right and it becomes built into the project conditions of approval. So there's a lot of wisdom to this approach from the city of making it, making it a a responsibility of the developer. To figure out a management plan, setting up the standards for that, requiring public participation and requiring the city to ultimately approve the plan. So all the stakeholder and then updating it every year because you're never gonna get it right the first time and you're always gonna adjust. And then situations change, there's different dynamics. So I think the way this is being approached is as as intelligent and as um result oriented as anything I've worked with.
And I appreciate that, very much appreciate that and the my and the difference that she said that you, the um the developer Colvin Group will actually be building. Um those extensions there. So from a point of view of future maintenance, which might be twenty years down the road. But who would maintain all of those um off just off the off-street parking?
The parking that is built on the public spaces will be maintained by the public. The parking that's built on the private spaces will be maintained by the property management of this property.
So is that the eighteen, seven and nineteen are on the public?
In in addition, the sixteen and the thirty one are also public, that's city owned.
Okay, so I just rest my my case. I mean, yes, the Colson Group or whoever is developing this is providing the initial infrastructure. But it is going on to the public for the future maintenance of it and that's.
Your point's well taken, yeah. I was I was focusing on construction costs, but you're right.
Right, and and I do, I do think I'm much more impressed with this plan now that you've gone through it. Um and particularly the way that that is on the street, I think that parking. Um and it provides just by its aspect, a better way of of people moving in and out of that space, a more efficient usage of the road. Um which also reduces the stormwater impact. So thank you very much for that. Rest there.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Elliott. And um we're gonna go to Commissioner Moore. But I did just wanted to say that my fellow commissioners are asking a lot of the questions I was going to be asking about parking. Um but maybe if if I have something after Commissioner Moore, then I'll go ahead and go, but there's been a lot of answers provided. Thank you. Commissioner?
I just had one comment on this with the management plan. You mentioned that's are we're the only smart train parking lot that doesn't. You don't pay a fee for. I don't know why that is, but I wonder if they can be incorporated into this management plan. To talk to the folks at Smart Train because I feel like that could be an asset to this um management plan just by. You know, having parking spaces be available to folks at night and um. You know, and not tied up during the day. So I don't know, that's just a it it. It feels to me like that was a piece that was not put into as a stakeholder.
Uh Smart is a stakeholder in this project from my perspective. And we're gonna go to Smart and we're gonna ask them whether they can't make this their site consistent with their other sites. So this doesn't become a site for people to park just because it's no parking fee. That creates a burden on this neighborhood and we're gonna go to them and ask that, you know, we don't control the outcome of that, this conversation. But we're gonna go and make our best case.
Yeah, I just think it's it's it. It it just such an impact on this neighborhood to have that be free.
Couldn't agree more.
Um and I do have seen it, I've seen people drive in there from Runa Park. And and yeah, it's a it's a great little asset for our community, but for everybody else too. So um that was my only comment on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um Mr. Elliott, thank you so much for providing all these responses to our questions. Um the only question that I had was maybe it was just a comment. So now the one, two and three bedroom ratios for parking spaces, I know it's been about a lot of questions about parking. Is that like a state or just like a a standard that's out there as far as the ratio of rooms two?
Those are, those are, those standards occur within cities. They create their own standards and and when you do a specific plan overlay and a general plan, one of the. Components of that overlay is a parking plan based on anticipated uses. So that varies place to place and it varies based on, it's not a state requirement.
So then this ratio is our is already part of the Santero Way uh specific plan?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, so anyone else have any other questions? Otherwise, we will go uh to the next item, which is um. Public comment. So we're, tonight is a public hearing and we'll be taking public comment. Uh for members of the public that are interested in providing input on this item, on this project. Um staff, are we still limited to three minutes or two minutes or what is the timeframe for each person?
Chair Leemis, the standard is three minutes. However, if if there's, uh it's at your discretion. If you'd like to grant someone a little bit of additional time, just be thoughtful and be consistent and and granting time to other folks too if they indicate that they need it.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll go ahead and um staff, if we can go ahead and start with uh public comment.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Jen Close, go ahead.
Good evening. Uh sorry, that took a second. Good evening, Chair Leemis and Commissioners. This is Jen Close, Executive Director of Generation Housing, where we champion more, more diverse and more affordable housing. I emailed you an endorsement letter for this project this afternoon. Apologies for not getting that in prior to your packet completion. But I'm just gonna go ahead and read that letter into the record tonight so you can hear it tonight in case you didn't have a chance. Uh per our project endorsement criteria analysis, Generation Housing strongly endorses the Gattati Station. Inclusionary housing development directly adjacent to the Smart Station. Gattati Station would provide ninety eight new homes, all of which, as proposed, would help alleviate our housing scarcity and affordability crunch. And do so in a climate smart, transit oriented way. The development would provide nine seventy nine affordable by design units, perfect for workforce housing and nineteen deed restricted units. Eight of which designated for very low income housing, which is something we need desperately. According to the US Census, this project is located within a walkable, bikeable distance of a major job center. The development promotes walkable, bikeable communities and healthy living through its close proximity, less than one mile to public transportation. Sonoma State University, full service grocery store, healthcare institutions and public parks. Providing more of the housing we need while reducing vehicle miles traveled, critical to reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. The project also offers ground floor commercial space, half of which which will serve its residents. And includes building a half acre community serving park. An improvement of a half acre parking lot, providing more overflow parking spaces for Smart Rail and adjacent residences. So we urge you to prioritize this project and to approve the project as revised and presented tonight. And as always, we thank you for your service.
Chair Leemis, that will end public comment.
Thank you. Okay, so um now at this time, we will um. Close the public hearing and uh we, I want to ask the commissioners if they have any further clarifying questions to staff or to the applicant at this time. Okay, uh does anyone want to discuss, are there any discussion points uh to discuss about the project before we uh vote, make a recommendation? Anyone have any discussion points that I could discuss or do we wanna, anyone wanna make a motion?
I I'd just like to say, I think it's a good project. I like the uh. We've seen a number of projects, we've seen this project come forward in a number of ways and so I do appreciate the effort that's gone into it. It looks like it would be a a good project for that place. And I think there's been a fairly reasonable trade off on uh attempting new parking that can be flexible for the future. And um certainly though there hasn't been any safety analysis, it's my perception. That it will maintain some of the safety elements um by not. Particularly, we understand speed is the bit that really creates problems. So and some of the resident, some of the. Some of the, one person writing in did say that there were people doing wheelies down at the end, doing donuts and things. And I certainly saw those those marks. So how we manage that speed and design it in. And I I hope that design with the the vertical in parking will perform both functions, making it efficient. And also making it more cautious people. So I certainly think there's a good lot of design elements in here.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you. Any other comments? From Commission? This, would anyone like to make a motion? The motion would be to make a recommendation to the city council on this project.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Um I'll make a motion um to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission recommending city council. Approval of preliminary design review for the Gattati Station Apartments. A mixed use development consisting of ninety eight multifamily units and fifty five hundred square feet of commercial space. On two point four two acres, a public park and community parking area. Um together with a density bonus, including necessary concessions and waivers required to implement the project.
Thank you, Brittany. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Leemis?
Yes. Okay, so this item passes on a four-zero. And let's go to the next item we have, which is reports by staff.
Thank you, Chair Leemis. Uh, just briefly, I wanna highlight uh some of the changes to our, or kind of updates to the Housing Element Update Schedule. So uh, we had originally tried to target Planning Commission dates. And invite the, the City Council to have a joint meeting with us on those dates. Unfortunately, with the schedule that the Housing Element Consultant has identified, uh, the last.
Could I just say, have we got John Savage? Do we want to invite?
Yes, please, please welcome. Thank you.
Yes, I'm, I'm back. I'm, uh, cameras on, mute is on.
Uh, thank you, John. Welcome back. Um, so in, uh, just updating, uh, we have. Been pursuing the Housing Element Update, doing a lot of engagement work. We had a survey of Sonoma State students. Um, stakeholders, a lot of engagement work to date, but now we're trying to get into the um. Uh, kind of in-person engagement efforts, and so the last opportunity we will have for that. Will be on the June fourteenth City Council meeting date, so please mark that in your calendars. We will uh be holding a joint meeting with the city, the Planning Commission and City Council on that date. Uh, unfortunately, we were trying to accommodate the Planning Commission's schedule at the direction of the council, but it just wasn't able to work out, so I hope you are all available for that. We will have the, the last uh presentation of the draft policies and programs. Before they get formalized into what's the draft housing element, which gets uh put out to the public for public review and comment. Unfortunately, because of the proximity of all of our planning commissioners to the proposed concept Housing Opportunity Sites. It seems that based on advice from the city attorney, the Planning Commission will not be able to provide direct input on the Housing Opportunity Sites. You all can review them and provide written comments uh as individual citizens. But uh, right now, we're anticipating that the programs and policies will be presented to the Joint Planning Commission City Council Meeting. And then we will have the City Council directly comment on the Housing Opportunity Sites. Um, similar to the uh proximity issue we had this evening uh with a conflict with Commissioner Savage. Uh, every commissioner lives within five hundred feet of one of the proposed Housing Opportunity Sites. And so we will not be able to uh have a, a direct discussion with you on that, but we welcome your input as individual citizens. Um, and uh, we will have that graphic available shortly. Staff uh is looking to target um in light of the requirements for the affirmatively furthering fair housing elements of the law. Which require us to ensure we're outreach to the folks who are uh kind of the least likely to participate in our normal processes. Uh, staff will be reaching out to some of our senior communities, so we're gonna target the mobile home parks and the um. The senior housing downtown, to have a coffee with a planner in-person meeting downtown. Uh, and I'm looking to the week of May sixteenth for that. Uh, we're creating the, the schedule, and I will be flaring uh those senior communities. And then secondarily, we're looking to have a, an engagement meeting directly with the Spanish-speaking community. And so I will be creating a flyer in Spanish, uh, targeting the um, kind of the, some of the Latino-owned businesses in town. Trying to get uh Spanish speakers and folks who may not always uh get notifications or be able to read the notifications we send out in English. And we will have a translator at that meeting. I do not have a location for it yet, uh, but I'm exploring options. Uh, and I am planning on engaging with the local uh Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to have them spread the word to their membership as well. But if any of you have uh suggestions on how we can better engage with that element of the community, I would love to hear from you. Uh, suggestions, because again, the state law is requiring us to ensure that we do everything we can to reach out to the folks who are often underrepresented. To ensure we hear their input, and we have created a Spanish version of our survey. And that will be included in the flyer and in the, the materials that gets handed out at the meeting, and then also um communicated through the translator to folks. So just know that we are kind of finalizing that last engagement schedule. Uh, and then in addition to those three opportunities, I do plan to table at the first two uh farmers' market meetings. Uh, just to expand on the uh engagement, then at that point, we'll have to get all the input put in to the uh, the consultants. So they can run with the draft, which we are anticipating will be published in uh August. It's a little later than we wanted to be. Um, but that's kind of the name of the game right now with uh all the cities, and so I think we'll be fine with our schedule and HCD. I'm more concerned with um any comments we might get from them regarding our process and our efforts. And so I'm really trying to spend a lot of time on that to make sure we get through their gauntlet. I will tell you, uh, Southern California is on a different track than us. Uh, and so we have a little bit of ability to read some tea leaves based on letters that those communities are getting. And there was a time when out of the eighty or so that had submitted, um, I think about sixty had been rejected. And so I'm doing my best to try to take lessons that they learned, and so is our consultant. Uh, because we really wanna have a certified housing element um when twenty-twenty-three starts. Uh, I'll leave it at that. We do have some development projects uh coming in. So look to the Projects in Progress website on the Community Development page, uh, if you're interested in that. I'm happy to provide a summary of those at a future meeting if the commission's interested in that, but um, I think for this evening, I'll leave it there.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Noah. And now, do any of the commissioners have any information or any reports that they'd like to make? Go ahead, Commissioner Hancock?
Yeah, I just got a question for Noah. Um, there was a, a plan for pedestrian and bicycle update. Which I guess was discussed in two thousand and nineteen, and I know there's an awful lot on the, the agenda going there. So I'm just asking for an update with a neutral, a neutral question about.
Very valid, very valid, because we are beyond uh the timing. We wanted to really spend some more time on that. We had originally thought we would um try to do that in-house with staff efforts. We have not been able to get to that, and so I've been looking to the city manager and uh the administrative services uh director, Angela, our finance director. Uh, on trying to reallocate some of the money that we normally would spend on professional contracts with planning consultants. We've been able to backfill that with grant money and, and spend it on our staff time to do some of this state-mandated housing work. So I'm asking for a budget allocation from the City Council uh starting July first to do a bike and ped master plan update. Uh, with a consultant, so we can actually get it accomplished, because you are, I appreciate you saying the question is neutral, but. Uh, internally, I'm feeling like we're behind on that, and we've made a commitment, and we have not been able to get to it. And so I think we just need to bite the bullet and get to a consultant. My anticipated um process with that is to take all the input we got through the long-range safety plan. For the local roadway safety plan, I'm sorry, and then the Vision Zero effort, because there's a lot of really good information on bike and ped. Uh, elements that we could fold into that, and then update the project list, make sure it consists with the general plan. And that would essentially be the, the framework for what we would move forward. Obviously, we wanna get input from the Planning Commission, City Council, and the community, but that's kind of the basic uh process that we're anticipating right now.
Thank you. Um, so anyone in the commission have any reports?
I just wanted to say that um on the, uh, May fourteenth. There's going to be um an event on Zero Waste um North Bay. And, and it's going to be a repair cafe, and it's up on Santa Rosa Avenue. And you can get more information on Zero Waste Sonoma, but it's um also a clothes swap. Um, yeah, free tacos that day, stuff for the kids, but also. To repair different items that you can bring, and it has all the information on, on the, the website.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? So I'll just share briefly that, um, Noah, I'll email you with some Spanish-speaking resources for some of those meetings that you're like, wanting to conduct. Um, at the county, we're starting drought uh town halls every uh fourth Thursday of the month. So this May twenty-sixth, on May twenty-sixth is our first drought town hall. It'll be online, I think, also on Facebook Live. Um, and we also have um some of our emergency preparedness uh events coming up. The one in Runa Park Cattati will be held on um July twenty-seventh at the Runa Park Cattati Library. That's the closest one that I found uh to this area. Um, and also this month is Welfare Preparedness Month, so. Start, you know, getting your weather radios and everything ready, because it's that time of year is starting, unfortunately. Um, so that was my report um for today. Was there any other items received after the agenda was posted?